All right, let's see if we can get up.[2.12][2.12](pause) Any luck?
We're up.[24.28][24.28](pause)
All right, good morning, everyone. Today is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. It's now 10:01. We're here for the regular session in Hunt County Commissioners' Court. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Martin to lead us in prayer, followed by the pledge of allegiances to our flags.
Shall we bow? Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to come here and take care of the community business. We ask for patience, understanding, wisdom as we go through this court. We thank you for everything you have given us. We thank you above all for this great country that we live in. In Christ's name we ask all these things. Amen.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, everyone. This morning, we have Commissioner Hutchins, Strate, Martin, and Harrison present. I'm Judge Stovall. I'll be presiding over the meeting today. Commissioners, you have the minutes from August 9th, 2022, regular session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We have the minutes from August 15th, 2022, special session. Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries. At this time, we'll have public testimony. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should conduct themselves in a civil manner. The Commissioners' Court cannot take action on items not listed on the agenda in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Concerns will be addressed by county staff that may be placed on a future agenda or addressed by some other course of response.
You got it.
Robert, I never can say your last name, Robert.[179.12][179.12](laugh) You want to come forward?
Um, after the agenda item, I thought, 28.
You want to do it after 28? Okay. Grant, same thing?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Lindell Gaskill, you'd like to come forward and speak?
I want to address an item that's on the agenda for item 12, Ms. Landrum. And I especially want to got my attention to see the announcement in the newspaper, classified ads about county clerk's records archive fund. I'm a member of the Hunt County Historical Group, and we take a lot of pride in the work that Hunt County has done in preserving our heritage. And we're glad to see that the needs have been met by acquiring the Armstrong building. I worked in the Piggly Wiggly building back in the 40s and 50s while going to school in commerce. But we have pieces of art that are under the jurisdiction of the county clerk, and I was proud to see, two words, the archive and the fund. And I know that a lot of our history is in danger when we start looking for space. And back in the 20s and 30s, and earlier than that, there were these large ledgers with the pen staff use. And whoever wrote things with pen staff, they were artists. And I just wanted to speak as an individual and for our group that we'd like to preserve these and support funding for doing this. And now, space is at a premium right now. A lot of things change. For example, at the library, I went by to read the newspapers the other day, and that one time, just a short while ago, they had a whole wall of newspapers. But now there are two. There are a lot of empty shelves of space. That's another governmental entity. And what I'd like to ask is that all the different divisions of government support the preservation of our heritage. Sometimes they may be under a different line staff organization, and that would require some cooperation, maybe giving up some power or governmental rigidity. But I would just like to ask that we preserve these large ledgers with the artistic writing and provide it for the future. I live on the farm I was born on 86 years ago, and I wandered around before finding my way back to it. But during that time, my parents were following mules, helping to buy adjacent tracks which were written up with these pen staffs. I enjoyed going by, taking family members, and seeing that art, seeing our heritage. And I just hope that Ms. Landrum's item on the agenda is supported by everyone here. I live in precinct four, on Webb Hill. The land goes down to the sulfur bottom. And Mr. Harrison, who has his name on the library, was part of a governmental entity that helped my father clear some of the sulfur bottom, getting the funding for it. So...
Well, thank you, Mr. Gaskill. Your time's up. We appreciate your comments and your desire to preserve history.
And I just encourage you to support this goal, to preserve our heritage, and I hope everyone's on the same page.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Being none, I'll move on to old business. Oh, John, you want to speak? Oh, come on up. Give us your name, please, sir.
My name is John Turner. I'm the commander of Disabled American Veterans Chapter here in Greenville. And Judge, Commissioners, I would just like to express our total and complete appreciation to you folks for the grant that you bestowed upon us. And we're still actively searching for someone to come out there. I do have one that's going to come out and take a look at it. The rest of us have turned us down to come out and look so far, but I do have one. And just want you to know, you know how much we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so very much. I just want to come do that in person.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Old business action items, Brian, are we good on this one?
It's still not ready.
It's still not ready? Okay. Well, we'll strike it, and then we'll start over when time comes. Commissioners, new business consent calendar. Any comments on the consent calendar or concern? No, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Under B, action items, approval accounts payable?
Make a motion where we pay the bills.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of line item transfers?
Make a motion to approve line item transfers?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Approval of payroll personnel?
Make a motion to approve payroll personnel?
Second.
Got a motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item number one, a presentation for a twin rotors mission. Paula Morgan, you want to come forward? We've got video. Is this a... Is this the... This is the desktop? Okay.
Good morning.
Yeah, I hope that's working.[629.32][629.32](pause)
Madison Franklin County, short line railroad serves quite a few local businesses in our communities. And so part of what we, the board does is oversee that railroad and see to its improvement, maintenance and so on. We have a, the rail is going, headed in a great direction. We've got a great operator now. We've had some trouble in the past with operators, but the current one is doing a great job. We've been able to make some good investments, but it's just a lot of money required to maintain and improve these rail, railroads so they can better serve our community. And so what we would like to do today is pass this resolution and support encouraging the state to fund a program called, or the Rail Relocation and Improvement Fund. It's a fund, not a program. Information on that, I'll just read a little bit. It is a, the Rail Relocation and Improvement Fund is a constitutional amendment that Texas voters passed in November 2005. It was Texas Proposition One. And it was on the November 8, 2005 election ballot in Texas as a legislatively referred constitutional amendment, and it was approved. HJR 54 created Texas Rail Relocation Fund in the state treasury and authorized grants of state revenue and issuance of public debt to relocate, rehabilitate and expand privately and publicly owned passenger and freight rail facilities and to construct railroad underpasses and overpasses. So the purpose of that was to assist these, these local short line railroads to remain and get to the condition they need to be in to serve their communities, particularly in the area of commercial business, helping keep jobs, bring jobs. But the state has not funded that, to my knowledge, since 2007. And that fund would, if it were funded, would allow the state to match available federal dollars for these programs. So our encouragement to the state legislature is that they fund this program, they consider it, and it would allow us to go pursue matching dollars from the federal government, which would, could be reinvested into our local communities.
May I have a question in reference to this? I believe this resolution is very important that we do pass this. I would like to ask this right here. Is that a 10% match from state in reference to the federal availability? And also, does the county have to pay normally what would be a 10% match, or is this fully a match with federal and state money only?
It's a federal and state only match. I'm not sure if it's a dollar for dollar match or not. This most recently came up in recent federal legislation. I haven't been able to get all the information on that.
I would like to know more in reference to that. It would be just like the road and bridge federal money as far as infrastructure and stuff like that, which we're required to do that. I hate that we lost all this money during this time, but I do appreciate you bringing this before the court.
Mark, is the, the other counties also doing one of these resolutions?
I believe-
The county has approved it. I don't know of any others.
Hopkins County has. There's interest in other counties. I'm not sure that they've passed it yet or not.
For the public, NETEX line is, is the partnership group of the counties is Collin, Hunt, Delta, Hopkins, Titus and Franklin counties. And the line, it's the old cottonbelt line. It ran from basically Wiley to Mount Pleasant. It was being abandoned. Part of it, other tracks got taken up between Wiley and Greenville before NETEX was created and stopped the destroying of the rail. And it currently serves between Mount Pleasant and Greenville. The reason is Mount Pleasant is because the Class 1 trains of Kansas City Southern and U.P. come in through Mount Pleasant. So any cars, cars can be offloaded in Mount Pleasant and picked up by the short line and brought into Sulphur Springs, Commerce and Greenville so that they can serve our communities. And so we greatly encourage our legislators to support this. Not only this grant, but also TextDOT has funding for railroads. And they only give it to one railroad. They don't give it to any of the others. And it's, this rail is in desperate need of repair, and we need some funding and some help from both the state and the feds because it's millions of dollars and the local folks don't have the money to take care of it. So Brian, I encourage you to give us support. We really need some help with this. I'd hate to pick on you, but you're sitting here, so.
Welcome, by the way. See you today.
All right. I should have recognized you earlier. Our state representative, Brian Slaton, is in attendance today. It's good to see him always be here. I'll entertain a motion for approval. Action item number three.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item four, resolution authorizing Hunt County to make a grant to the Senior Center of Resources and Public Transit Incorporated organization, amount of 5,000 for the Texas Feeding, Texas Home Delivery Meal Grant Program. Danny, is Danny here? This is a program we do every year. It's Meals on Wheels that we support, the 5,000. So entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number five, a proclamation proclaiming September 2022 is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Hunt County. Is anybody present with that organization? If you'd like to come forward, sir.
Thank you, Judge.
State your name, please, sir.
Yeah, I'm Bob Barnett. I'm a member of US2 as a national prostate cancer support group. Each year claims the lives of some 17,000 men due to prostate cancer. Most of those lives could have been saved had those men been aware in a timely fashion that they had the disease because it is one of the most treatable cancers when found early. So prostate cancer, unlike other diseases like flu or something, has no symptoms most of the time. Men don't want to talk about it. We don't. We don't do a good job. Seventeen thousand's on par with what's happened with COVID to men. But COVID's had a huge amount of press. Prostate cancer doesn't get much. We all know about it, but we, if we don't have any symptoms, we don't want to talk about it. We don't want to hear about it. It's important to women because those same women can probably kick their husband's rear end to getting tested. Because if they don't get tested, they won't know about it until probably it's too late, or it's a real tough time. So we're going around to all the different commissions asking for similar proclamation. I got an email last night with the governor's sign off on a proclamation. So we're trying to raise awareness for men to get tested, and it's somewhat symbolic that September is the month we, we go for. But that's what we're trying to do to get men aware of this thing and save lives.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions? Entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. Action item number six, the quarterly inter-presentation discussing current ag life events and educational programs. Sarah?
You each have a packet before, before court started, but I do want to introduce, these are all of our, we have a full staff. This is the first time we've been here with a full staff, y'all, in three years. So myself, Sarah Allen, County Extension Agent for Agriculture and Natural Resources, Mary Shockley, our County Extension Agent for Family and Community Health, and David Drake, our Integrated Pest Management Agent. And David covers a couple, like three, four, five counties. So we quickly want to just give you an overview of what we've been doing in our program areas for the last three or four months, five. In the agriculture, natural resources realm, we have just completed a five-month series for small and new landowners. As I think all of you are well aware, we have a large influx of small and new landowners here in Hunt and surrounding counties. And as you can see on the, the paper of the flyer is here, each month had a different section, topics that we covered. We talked about just land ownership and property management, planning an ag business, fencing, farm machinery, just the basics that new landowners need to know. A month was dedicated to sustainable agriculture and another two livestock. So those participants who came all five months got a very good overview of the basics of property ownership and livestock management. And in addition to this series, this is a program that I do throughout the year. We also had a weed identification program in May in the Outdoor Learning Center. And then our district economist and I have been working with realtors in the area to educate them. We've put together some continuing education programs that they can receive their CE credits. And title companies work with us. We host an event like four o'clock in the afternoon, give them an overview of like how people get their one D one valuation to lower their property taxes on farmland and pond management, things that realtors may not know a lot about, but get asked when they're selling these smaller agricultural properties. So that's an overview of the Ag and Natural Resources program. I want to just hit on 4H, which is not just my program. We all do 4H. But the 4H year ends August 31st. And so for the 2021, 22 4H year, we had our largest membership ever in Hunt County. And yes, we ended the year with 171 total participants in our traditional clubs. We do have five active clubs here in Hunt County and eight active project groups. And that was 142 members, 11 Clover Kids and 18 volunteers last year. And we expect that to be even larger. Proud to say we reached just right at 1,000 people with our fourth grade science of agriculture last spring. We have 17 youth members who have become certified Texas 4H ambassadors in science, technology and math, STEM, livestock and healthy living. And so they are working with Mary and I to further grow those programs. The culmination, Philip Martin will know this from being when he was a child, of your 4H year is completing a record book. And lots of kids don't take time to do that. And this year we had 17 record books submitted in the county, and that's huge. It's a big deal. And I do want to jump back. That, that 142 members was 50 member increase over last year. So very, very much a very growing program. And then you can just run down through these. We hosted a STEM camp this summer for three, two days a week for three weeks. Mary got to attend her first 4H camp for a few days. We've reached over 600 kids this year through our curriculum programs. We take into the schools. And we had, these are just highlights. There was way more than this, but these were the big, great programs. And then we had lots of kids go to our Texas 4H roundup in College Station this summer, had a state winner. We had one of our 4H members that graduated this past year, ended up with about 135,000 in scholarships for college. So very much a growing and active program. So we just wanted to give you all a few highlights. Mary is going to talk next about the family and community health impacts.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. So my portion of this flyer, you've got some pictures there to look at. A big project I did this summer was with the Lone Oak Boys and Girls Club. In collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club of North Texas, we went to the Greenville Home Depot and asked for a little bit of a donation to run a Learn, Grow, Eat, Go program. And they obliged wonderfully, almost $500 worth of donations. We set up two seven by three raised beds out in Lone Oak outside their school for a summer garden. The children learned about increasing their fruits and vegetable intake. They got to eat the foods that they grew. We got to do a lot of silent nature walks outside. A lot of them, that was kind of foreign to them, to be outside and be quiet. But we had a really good time. We also learned a little bit about the nutritional facts of the vegetables that they grew. They did an extensive vegetable research, learning the origins of the vegetables that they planted, and even did some fun taste testing, homegrown versus store bought veggies. So we had a really good time. That was a really good collaborative effort as far as our Greenville Home Depot and the Boys and Girls Club. I think it was some odd 300 contact hours out there in the garden. So it was really wonderful. A program I've got going on right now is in collaboration with the Greenville Public Library and their Living, Healthy Living series. I'm doing a Be Well, Live Well. I've got about 18 regular attendees in that, and that is for an older population, over than 50, learning about nutrition and well-being. And we've had a really good time. We made overnight oats last night together, so that was really fun. Hopefully it was a good breakfast for all of them. And then also I'm going to be working with Lone Oak ISD to get them the designation of a healthy school-recognized campus, which will include two youth programs, an adult program, and then a big Walk Across Texas event with them. So I'm looking forward to that. And I think that's, that's about it. I'm going to let David take over.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. The IPM program is, or Integrated Pest Management, it's a true cooperative program between federal, state and local governments. And as an IPM agent, I'm, I'm stationed in, my, my academic home is in the Department of Entomology in College Station. My service area is here in northeast Texas, covers several counties, as Sarah said. And my office is actually on the, the campus of Texas A&amp;M Commerce, where I'm an adjunct faculty member. And so we, we focus on the crops or crop production. It says IPM where we look at a balanced process of nature and economics in making our recommendations to control pests. That also includes, you know, diseases and, well, we cover all, all aspects of crop production, but, you know, we are in the Department of Entomology. So I do want to highlight a couple of things. We do have a, a research, teach and extension farm that was acquired in 2015. It's in, it's north of Greenville. I put a map here on, of it. And so we've, we do a lot of our research there. And we have two annual field days. We do a wheat field day in May, and then a summer crops one in July. And that's been a cooperative effort between, again, AgriLife and, and Texas A&amp;M Commerce. And then some of our other cooperators, our farm groups, CCIRI, and all, and our Texas wheat and corn producers. and corn producers, and also our local industry. So, that facility is there. We, I've done lots of research. I listed the crops, won't go into that, but that's, that's an asset to this area that is helping our producers. One thing that we saw this year from our producers, it flipped to the back page, because of the dry conditions on our wheat crop, we had an infestation of Hessian fly, which is a small fly that feeds on the base of the wheat plant. And we had, it was a devastating year for that. It basically makes the wheat so it doesn't produce grain, or it falls over and then you can't harvest it. So, we had, we had some fields that were devastated, had others that were hurt. So, an estimated for Hunt County, if we have 22,000 acres of wheat last year, and we had about a 5% loss overall, that cost us almost a million dollars just for that one insect. And in our program, we evaluate varieties for resistance, we evaluate planting methods and other practices that can help stop that. And so, we're, we're, we included that in our field day, and we'll have some other training for producers later. The last thing I put on here was I do have a monthly newsletter that goes out to our producers and try to get that information out in our research. And my contact information is on the front page there. So, appreciate the opportunity to share about our program.
Thank you.
We thank y'all for your continued support.
You bet. Thank you.
Sarah, when is that 4H banquet? What date?
I'm so glad you mentioned that.
Okay, what, what date was?
We've been reminding each other since we came in, not to forget that. The 4H banquet is Monday evening, and you are all invited. You should have received an invitation.
It's next Monday?
Yes.
At what time? Uh, Freakside?
Well, six or 6:30. I can call you in a little while with the exact, I did not, I think it's 6:30.
If you will put me.
Yes, you'll be coming, okay.
Yes.
So, we would love to see any of you there. We, you should have gotten an invitation. If you didn't, call us after a while, and we'll be sure you do. So, we'll be recognizing, we're going to have, well, we have right at 90, 95 people signed up to be there so far. So, we're going to have a great banquet. 4H is really on fire right now. Lots of good things.
Good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right. Action number seven, a quarterly report for the Boys and Girls Club. Go.
Hi, thank you. I am Cara McElroy. I am the chief development officer for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Northeast Texas. They gave a really good setup, actually. Hey! They did, they came out and did some raised garden beds for our Lone Oak Club. And if you visited the Lone Oak Club this summer, and there was a kid at the front, you would have heard, "Hi, thank you for coming. Do you want to see our garden beds?" They were very excited about it, and they had so much fun, they had so much fun tasting it. So, thank you guys for coming out and doing that. I'm here to give an update for our typical quarterly report that we do. So, Hunt County provides funding to our Hunt County Clubs for prevention programs. So, the Boys and Girls Club, what we do is we take the kids who need us most, and that looks like a lot of different types of kid. It could look like a child in a foster situation. It could look like a child who is maybe staying with grandma or grandpa. A child, it could look like a child who has two parents, but they're working and don't get off until six, and so they need a place to go during the after-school hours. So, we take the kids who need us most, and we provide them with an outcome-targeted club experience. So, we're not babysitting. We're not just watching movies and playing games. We are using research-backed curriculum. Being a part of Boys and Girls Clubs of America gives us access to resources where millions of dollars of research has gone in to ensuring that the programs we're providing allow for the outcomes we're looking for. And what we're looking for is kids who graduate high school on time with a plan for the future, whatever that is. Maybe it's entering the workforce, maybe it's going to college or university, maybe trade school. We just want them to have a plan. We want them to be living a healthy lifestyle. We want them to be exhibiting good character and citizenship, that's really important to us. And we want them to be academically successful. So, that's what we do at the club. I want to talk specifically about this summer. I have had a lot of summers at the Boys and Girls Club, and this one is one that I don't think I will ever forget, in addition to the summer of 2020. That one was a rough one. This summer was full of moments that made you celebrate being a Boys and Girls Club. So, you walk into Reese Davis, it's full. It's the first time it's been full since the summer of 2019. You see the staff members high-fiving kids. We haven't been able to do that in a while. You go to Lone Oak Club, and they're doing these amazing partnerships. We haven't had, been able to have partners in the club in a while. So, it was really amazing to be back to full capacity and operating, you know, on all pistons. It was also the summer where we really saw the effects that COVID has had on our kids. We're seeing academic gaps larger than we've ever seen before. We're seeing mental health issues at a scope we've never seen before. And we are also seeing a need for improved healthy lifestyles programming. So, that could be meal service, that could be partnerships, like what we brought in, getting, making sure the kids are physically active. And a big one is reminding kids and teaching them how to interact in person. That's a skill, and it's a skill that was lost a little bit during the remote time. So, we're really focusing on those three areas. You should have a report, if not, we can make sure we get it to you, that shows our numbers. Reese Davis was serving over 80 kids a day this summer. Our Lone Oak Club was serving almost 60 kids a day this summer. And in Commerce, we're really focusing on our sports leagues, so we're partnering with the City of Commerce there, and we are actually operating their sports leagues. So, we're super grateful to the county, not only for the prevention programming funding that you guys provide, but also for the additional grant that's been provided to us for COVID relief. I just want to give you a quick statistic. So, in our prevention programs, we are able to track social security numbers of our kiddos all the way up until they're 18. And we can do it for, in every Boys and Girls Club across the state of Texas. So, something like a million kids have gone through this program, and their social security numbers have been tracked. And what we look for is if they ever interact with the juvenile justice system. That program has a 99% success rate across the state of Texas. The kids who are attending Boys and Girls Clubs, who are interacting in our prevention programming, they're not interacting with the juvenile justice system, and that's an amazing thing. It's an amazing thing for Hunt County. We know that investing in Boys and Girls Clubs in Hunt County is going to make Hunt County a better place for years to come. So, we're grateful, and happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner? Any questions? Thank you. Or you got a question?
Yes, I have a statement.
Okay.
Reference to four, five, correction, four, six, and seven, vote on, do we need to vote on that?
Just reports, there's none needed. Daniel, we don't have to approve just a report, do we?
Yes, yes.
Oh.
We always have. No, I'm talking about the quarterly interpretation, quarterly reported boys, because they're required to come before us.
Yeah, they're required to give those reports.
Yes, yes. That's what I'm saying.
Back up and clean them up, if you want to do. I don't think we have to, but.
You're talking about, they're required to give reports.
Accepting, accepting their quarterly report, that's what we're doing.
I might as well. I don't know, I don't have the contracts in front of me, but if there's a requirement, do that.
Okay, that's fine. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me just say, all right, let's back up. Which one, you want to start with? Number five?
We did number four, didn't we, not?
We did four.
Okay.
There's money related to it.
Where is it? Six and seven. Six and.
All right. Entertaining motion to approve the report on action, item six.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Entertaining motion to approve, report on action item number seven.
No move.
Second.
Got a motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Action item number eight, quarterly report for Northeast Texas Children's Museum. Charlene?
Good morning. It may be cloudy outside, but the sun is shining on the Northeast Texas Children's Museum. And I want to thank the Commissioners Court for your role in making the sun shine. First of all, we want to thank you for the CARE grant. This is enabling us to meet the needs that we have because of so many visitors to the Children's Museum. We are enlarging our parking lot. We are making a covered area in our outdoor part, and we feel like we are being able to offer more and more to the children of Northeast Texas. Now, the second reason the sun is shining, well, it always shines, but is because the Children's Museum has been able to sell their property behind Chicken Express, and this has been sold to Starbucks. Now, I don't know, some of you have not been on Commissioners Court for a long time, but Commissioners Court played a big role in the Children's Museum's ownership of the property. Originally, the four non-taxing entities in Hunt County gave the money to the Children's Museum to build on, but not sale. And when the Children's Museum was able to purchase the property we now have on Highway 11, those four non-taxing entities gave us permission to sell the property. So, this is, has made it possible, yesterday, we wrote a check to completely pay off the ownership of that property due to selling that piece of property. So, this is huge. We are looking forward to all that we will be able to provide the children as we continue to offer more and more at the museum. Now, since January 1st, we have had over 27,000 visitors to the museum. And one of the reasons the parking lot became so important is that we were having 1,000 visitors a week during the summer. So, we want to make these visitors where they do not have to park along the Mohawk truck line. If you've been there, you know we're located there by Mohawk, and a lot of their trucks take up that space. During the summer, we have offered cooking classes, art classes, had visits from the Commerce High School Robotics Team, offered a Princess Spa Day and a Summer Fun Day. Bob Stahoviac is continuing, we're calling him Bob the Builder, and he has just finished an outdoor safety house sponsored by State Farm Insurance. And this will have a slide and safety tips on the inside. So, we're also anticipating the completion, or even the beginning, of a fossil exhibit that we are working with the Upper Trinity River Authority, which is building Lake Ralph Hall. And they are also working with the Pro exhibit, the Pro Museum. So, the Pro is going to make moles of bones found in the Suffer River, and what bone, what animal that bone came from, and then we will have fossils that the kids can dig for and find these same bones. So, we're very excited about this exhibit with the Upper Trinity and the Pro Museum. And next, on Wednesday, September 28th, from 5:30 to 7, we are having a big birthday party for the Children's Museum. It is our 20th birthday. So, I hope all of you can come and see what all we've been able to do. But a very big thanks to Hunt County Commissioners Court.
Thank you. Any questions? Not an entertaining motion for approval of the report?
No move.
Second.
Motion second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. You know, just, I hope the public recognizes how much support we give to the community and what great organizations we have, you know, that are really providing a lot of great services for our citizens. And we appreciate each and every one of them for the hard work they put in and the benefits they give to our children and to our communities. Thank you, Shirley. Actually, I'm going to discuss the school resource officer, approximate cost for physical year 23. Sheriff?
First, I'm going to start off by introducing the superintendent of Campbell ISD, Ms. Morgan, and the superintendent of Bowles, Ms. Goss. I was reached out to, it's, well, it's been on my, on my heart since, in a lot of people's hearts, since Uvalde, and the way our world's going right now, it's ludicrous. I get upset about this because I just think of every time I go to a ballgame or something like that, we've got to have, be surrounded by police to protect our children. When used to, the only time we sent an officer to a game was when he was watching his kid. And it breaks my heart. But anyway, I was reached out to by Ms. Morgan in reference to maybe getting Campbell some help because of Campbell being the, you know, not having the taxing entity and everything. Campbell and Bowles are the only schools. Celeste does not have an officer in the school, but they have officers on at all times, and Celeste School is right there in the city. Campbell and Bowles, I mean, Campbell and, yeah, Campbell and Bowles is not. We're their first line of defense, and there's not an officer in these schools. So, when she approached me, she said, "We don't have the funding." And I started looking into it with her, and then Ms. Goss also reached out. She had been talking to Ms. Morgan. And Bowles, I hate to say this, is in the state of Texas, is one of the, one of the most poorest schools that is in the state of Texas. But I will tell you, saying that, I have two stepsons that went to Bowles, and they are remarkable. It is, it is unbelievable, and remarkable. But anyway, we got to putting the numbers down, and what we have came up with is we're requesting to try to split the salary. It's going to be, give or take, equipment, the whole thing, cars and all, is going to give or take right at $150,000 per school. We would like to request that the county pays for half of that, $75,000 per school, and that's going to be for all, I mean, we're going to put two deputies, and this is not, now, explain this. The school superintendent will not regulate, nobody regulates. It will actually be a police officer in the school by the sheriff's office, fully uniformed, fully equipped, and trained in everything, and will report to the sheriff. And we're also, they're going to help with the children. There is a program, you know, interacting with police officers. I want officers to try to teach that, because where does it get any better than that? But also, when it's not school time, these officers will roll back into patrol duties throughout the summer, which is naturally our busiest time, busiest time. Now, if they have summer school, I think me and Ms. Goss talked about, maybe about two weeks, they'll come back in for that two weeks. But these schools has, Bowles, they have a deal that monitors doors, but if there's a door open, who do they got to send? A teacher to check it. This way, we'll have an officer that they can say, "Hey, we've got a door breach. We've got something." This is very, very, very important. I just don't see how there's any way, form or fashion, for this type of money and what they're offering to try to split. I mean, they have no more money. I mean, they do not. I talked to Ms. Goss last night. I think she has funds left over of about, by the time they get started, of about $125,000. 75 of that's going to come out of this. Now, if you don't think that's going to kick them, that's, that's hard. And this is just something that needs to be done, has to be done, and we're asking for some help, please.
Okay. Commissioners, for what, of course, Sheriff and I have been discussing this for some time, and what we're, what I'm asking to do today, because we don't have contracts, we don't have a total agreement, but I would like to authorize our attorney to get into negotiations with their attorneys to get some kind of a contract agreement. They pay $75,000, we pay the difference in it. And we need to work out, I know that there's ballgames that some of the schools have to have, law enforcement after it. If it's our person, I've talked to Sandy about it, that's a little bit of a touchy issue because it's on our payroll, and if they're working, whether or not we got to pay them overtime or not. So, we got to work through there to see if legally, how we've got to do that. If we can build that into it as a stipend or whatever we have to do, but we need to handle that situation, or they may have to hire somebody else. But we just don't want to get in trouble with iron wage laws.
The school has, the school has said, we discussed that with the school, and they said, and we discussed it, it, yeah, above and beyond, that's exactly right. That's, just like they do right now, they will hire an off-duty officer. Now, if, we'll have to research, like I said, with HR and Sandy, if our officer decided to work it, would, what would be the deal with that? But if not, he will, I'm going to put that on him, too. He'll be required to.
She, he or she?
He or she, yes, I'm sorry. They will, they will be required to get that covered, but it'll just go the same.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea if it. Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea if it was the resource officer, because I already know the kids, they're already familiar with them, so I'd like, really like to see if, try to figure out a way to work that out, so it could be used. I just don't know what, I'll leave it up to HR people and Daniel to figure that out.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
In reference to that, basically, there are some, these extras, I believe Bowles Home, if I'm not mistaken, are using off-duty deputies. Am I correct? Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring that out, so.
Yes, yes.
But, but my, my, I had a concern, and I'm gonna bring this up, I checked. Okay, why Campbell and Bowles Home? And I believe you've hit it right on the button right there, but I did talk with some of the other schools the last day or so. Lone Oak is getting ready to hire one, they have one now with the city, but they're getting ready to completely hire one, from my understanding. Wolf City, gentlemen up there, said that they have everything covered.
Yes, sir.
Basically, that they're looking good.
Yes, sir.
Celeste, Celeste, basically, what they have is, they have an agreement trying to take place in reference to the city and the school. Bland has their own already.
Yes, sir.
Roy City has their own.
Yes, sir.
Quineland has their own.
Yes, sir.
And what he's saying, I think does need to be considered.
Well, we, matter of fact, we trained with Celeste about a week or two ago, on a weekend, a whole group of officers through that, throughout their schools. We, my officers went to a lockdown drill yesterday in Quineland, too, and we're training with them. This is going on, we, we are not gonna, you know, we're gonna pray that this never occurs, never, but we're gonna do our dead level best to prepare for this, and I think this is a major step if we can get this done. And like I said, this is, one of the things that is such a plus, like I said to me, is this has actually fallen to where the training, it falls on the sheriff's office, because I explained to Ms. Goss and Ms. Morgan, naturally, we're not, you know, as big police officers, we're not interested in putting every little kid in jail or anything like this. But due to the fact that it's under the sheriff's office, it takes certain stipulations away. You know, it's hard sometimes on, on a school police, resource officer with the administration to make decisions on Little Jimmy versus getting in trouble on the same level as Little Jimmy, the coach's son, getting in trouble. And so, we, we're able to take all that out, and we're gonna, but it will be a completely uniformed, completely everything we will, we will have to try to protect that school. This is a start, but this is all they have. And we're gonna go back to this, the city of Wolf City has officers, and, and they got Wolf City covered. I know, I know how Wolf City's covering.
That's right.
Okay. City of Celeste, they have city officers on during school hours, they're right there, I mean, it's in their city, basically. Okay. Quineland, city officers, everything. Just to let you know, Bowles ain't a city, and Campbell don't have officers. So, it's up to us.
All right. Well, I, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the auditors to add $200,000 to our contingency line item in the budget, so that once we have a contract and agreement worked out, we'll have sufficient funds to, after October 1st, appropriately put them in the right categories, if that itself, right with the officer. Okay. So, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank, thank y'all. And good luck with school starting up. Action item number 10, to discuss adding a new employee for the Veterans Service Office. Commissioners, Ted Oats has asked that he has found somebody that's gonna work for him, and now that they got their new office going, she's available to go to work immediately, he would like to go ahead and bring her on instead of waiting to the new budget year. We budgeted that position for next year, but we'd like to go ahead and put that person on, and we'll move money out of contingency to cover costs if they need it. I don't, I don't know, we haven't even looked into that for.
I'm a little confused. Didn't y'all take that action last week?
Oh, we did?
Yes, sir.
You got back on there? Okay, well, excuse me.
Yeah, we asked him to move the money-
Money last time? We did that last time? Okay.
He said we have to make a motion.
Bad on me. Action item 11, the elected official salaries for physical year 2023. Entertaining motion for approval?
Getting distracted, I'm sorry. Do what?
I'm sorry, I was, I was catching-
Okay, going back up. Action item number 11, the elected official salaries for physical year 2023. Entertaining motion for approval of elected official salaries.
No move.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. I may need some horse therapy after this.
I second that, too.
Action item 12, the county clerk's physical year 2023 archive plan. Entertaining motion for approval.
No move. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 13, commercial lease agreement buying between IGYM Investments, Inc., and Hunt County Sheriff's Office. Commissioners, this is the annex building, annex sheriff's office down in Quineland, or on 276. We had a, had a lease worked out, it just never got approved by the court. We're already using the building, it, the term of the lease goes from election year to election year, so whoever the sheriff is, is wanting to work out the lease, so I'd make a motion to approve this lease.
Second.
And a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action item 14, letter of proposal for architectural engineering services. This, commissioners, is for some assistance in helping with our jail committee, steering committee that we've appointed to work on, looking at the possibility of doing another election for construction of a new jail. We have, you have the proposal there, it's, I don't remember, $29,000, I think, wasn't it? Something like that.
Something like that.
From the same architectural firm that helped us back last year, so I'd make a motion to approve it.
No move. Second.
We had motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, all opposed, motion carries. Action item 15, we're not ready for floodplain, right? Daniel?
That's right, not till next week.
Okay.
Old business.
Old business. Okay. All that, Brian, you don't have anybody here with the Platts, do you? Any, there's nobody here. Okay, I'm gonna skip through all of those then, and let's go to action item 28, the action on awarding radio infrastructure contract to L-3 Harris. Daniel?
All right, I've sent you guys all the 308 or so-page contract, and I sent the revisions of that very recently. That's been gone through by our consultant, Keith Witt, Trot Communications. The L-3 people are here today and are gonna make a presentation, and then I also sent a short, one-page summary of what's in that contract, and then directed the Commissioner's Court to the page, contract 302 or so, that relates to the specific dollar amounts that are called for in the contract. L-3, the L-3 personnel are here today to make a presentation and are open for any questions. If there's any additional technical questions that you'd like our consultant to answer, that can also happen as well. So, I sent you the list yesterday, the different possible actions that you can take today, but hopefully, at the end of the contract presentation, if you have any questions, we can answer those. If not, we can get our consultant to come in and answer those, and either you can vote today, or if you have additional questions that can't be answered today, that can either happen next week, or the, you know, two weeks later. Obviously, there's public comments to be made as well before, at the end of the presentation, before any action is taken by the court. And so, the L-3 people are here, I think, ready to make this presentation. I can insert any questions that you have right now, though.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, not. Let's see if I can get this laptop. See if that comes up online. I may have just cut it off. Hang on a second. Oh, you did, I thought you had it on the laptop. Ooh, my, my bad. No, 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 that's fine. So, you got it? Now, it should be up then.
All right, we'll just jump straight into it. Morning, afternoon, Commissioners, Judge Jason La Forge, L-3 Harris. I know that we spoke roughly a month ago, I think, and have some items to readdress that we, some concerns with the schools and the coverage of the schools, and so, we'll go into that in this presentation as well. So, brief introduction on L-3 Harris, I know that you guys are familiar with us, with the facility being here, it is our largest facility. We are broken into three mission-aligned segments. We have integrated mission systems, which is what the facility here in Greenville is, it's an ISR, which is intelligent surveillance and reconnaissance. Then we also have our space and airborne systems, where we build, develop, and deploy satellites. Then we have our communications systems division, that's where we fall as PSPC, or Public Safety and Professional Communications. It's also where our warfighter systems are located at, where our troops use in the battlefield today. We are a $17 billion a year annual organization. So, this is our presence in Texas, we do have a significant presence in Texas. Like I said, you are, you have our largest facility as L-3 Harris here in, in the city of Greenville. We do have 24 locations, we contribute 810 million in direct wages, we have over 8,700 employees in Texas, 5,600 of those right here in Hunt County at this facility. It's estimated that over 2,500 of those citizens live here, that work at our facility, so it's important to make sure that we, we take care of, of those people in the facility that they work at, which this design does do. And we do contribute over $2 billion annually to the economy here, which is a pretty big So, this is a, kinda busy, but if you look at it, I'm gonna make it simple to understand, the color coding, what is on the left is what L-3 Harris is going to provide to the system partnership, it is a partnership, and then the right side is what Hunt County is going to be purchasing. So, if you look and you start at the very left at the top, we have the cores, and they're redundant cores. So, one of those will be placed at the sheriff's office, the other core will be placed at the facility, and what that does is that gives you guys local control. You'll be able to add, remove users, you'll be able to manage your own system. You're not relying upon us because you have one side of it, you're not relying upon somebody else, another entity, to keep doing the functions that you need to do in terms of the radio system. We'll also be bringing two sites at the facility, then we're also gonna be providing a third site at the sheriff's office, and we will be paying to maintain this equipment as well, so we'll provide it at no cost to the county, we'll pay to maintain it. The big reason why we need the third site is to provide coverage in, in the, in the city area, but also to provide some redundancy for us at the facility. So, it, it makes sense for us to essentially provide that to the county as well. So, then the county will provide four sites. If you remember, I was here last time, it was two additional sites, but I know that whenever we talked and we went through it, you guys are very concerned about the schools, and we'll kinda talk about that whenever we get to the next slide into what we offer there. So, we do have two Symphony consoles that will also be located at the facility. That's important, because you guys are gonna be purchasing three. One thing that is neat about the Symphony console, if you will, is that if you have a username and a login, you can go to our facility and log in, so if something happens to your dispatch center, you could come to the facility, and vice versa, we could come here and log in. So, and we can do this actually across all five counties, so I have a, a slide that talks about the five-county partnership as well. We have our interop gateway ability, there's 20 total talk paths, and so, what that does is that allows for, like, disparate radio system traffic to pass over your site. So, like the city of Greenville, you can, you can bring their traffic into the system, they'll have that interoperability. It'll also allow for interoperability of adjacent counties that aren't necessarily part of the five-county partnership that we're gonna look at. And then in terms of the radios, we are giving you our, our absolute best radios. So, in the upper right-hand corner, you see that we have our XL 200M radio, it's a multiband radio, yours is equipped with VHF 7800, comes standard with Wi-Fi, Bluetooth, noise cancellation. And the Wi-Fi is really important, because, you know, we did increase coverage with adding the two additional sites to the schools, but all of our XL radios are Wi-Fi capable. So, that means if the school has Wi-Fi inside the structure, which most do, you can talk to the radio system. So, you'll be able to talk in and out of the building if the RF coverage isn't, isn't capable of providing what's needed to respond and talk with the first responder community.
So, if a radio's down, or the tower's down somewhere, and we don't have enough strength, the Wi-Fi will still be working?
Correct.
Okay.
You just need the IP connection to get back to the network, and then it'll, it'll pass the radio traffic.
When you first came out with this in reference to that we were having a problem, or there was possibly a problem between Merritt and Celeste, May, you could just took care of that problem that we had, am I correct?
This will help with that, but we also have added a site in Celeste.
Cool.
So, you'll, you're getting ahead of me, but we'll get there. So, and then our XL 200 portable radio is our flagship radio, first market with all bands, LTE capability. It's manufactured out of our Rochester facility in New York, which is the same location where all of our Department of Defense radios are manufactured as well. So, this is what the, so this is what the, this is what the local county system looks like, it's a total of seven sites. So, if you look up here, we have the two down here in the facility. We have the one at the sheriff's office, and we have the one up in Celeste, we have the one out west, and we have the two originals that we looked at after communications with the sheriff. He wanted to have communications and commerce, he wanted to have the ability to talk in the southern part of the county, and then whenever we came, whenever we had a discussion a month ago, it was the schools, which is completely understandable, right? So, we looked at that, and we looked at that, we got a critical building list, your consultant worked with this on us as well, and we had some areas that were in single-digit DB, which is in-building penetration, and whenever we added the two additional sites, all, all in-building as well into the double digits. I think the lowest is 13 DB, I mean, there's parameters, but it increased the in-building coverage across the entire area. So, this does have a 95% portable from the hip guarantee, it's better than 95, but 95 is public safety standard, so that's what we went with. It does have a DAQ 3.4, which is voice quality, which is also a public safety standard. You also have a, you have an ISSI included in your offering, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, and that's where the partnership with all the adjacent counties comes into place. So, and we talked about the radios, and then a very important part here is the Van Zant County Cooperative Purchasing Contract is what we're utilizing. So, roughly two weeks ago, Van Zant County completed and executed a contract with L-3 Harris. It was a competitive RFP process. They also included, they also included the ability for cooperative purchasing, so it sets the discount structure at 45%. Your typical state bid stuff is like 26%, so you're 19 points greater there. Then it also allows for additional system discounting, which we applied another $1.4 million in discounting on top of the 45%. So, that in your price pages, you'll see, it's very detailed and outlined in how all that plays out. And important, that the process is approved to utilize ARPA funding. So, the Van Zant went through that, Van Zant County went through that process, was it Grant- Was it Grantworks? Grantworks looked over it. So if you guys want to use ARPA funding, it's approved to do that.
We'll need to get our consultant too, because my understanding in talking to Van Zant, they had to submit everything to get approval. So I just hope that covers us through this agreement. But we'll get our consultant to make sure that they agree with Grantworks, so... But that's a great deal for us if we can do that. I hope we can. I appreciate being able to do that.
And I think one of the... I know you speak... We addressed that with the consultant. We addressed that with Van Zant County, and so those boxes...
I know they did it right for them. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, I...
Yeah, yeah. I just want to make sure it carries over through this contract.
How long did it take for them to get confirmation from ARPA in reference to it? Do we have any idea?
They did it all at the same time, yeah.
Goodness.
So...
Yes.
That they agree. Yeah.
So this map is what we call a heat map. And it basically shows the DB level of the in-building penetration. And as you can tell, the yellow is 30 DB, and it's closest to the sites, right? And that's going to give you your in-building coverage. 20 DB will still give you in-building coverage. 10 DB is a little bit more sporadic. And then the DAQ 3.4 is the blue. But as you can see, the county is very well-covered in terms of RF communications. So then it goes back to if we need to... If we find a building janitor closet down the hallway or in the basement, you know, we can always leverage the Wi-Fi capability in the school if we have to. So there's different paths to communicate. So that's always a big plus. I will say, and I kind of... When I put in the system diagram, we did include 140 of our beyond license, which is push-to-talk-over LTE. And what that does is that allows you to download that on a... Any cellular... You know, like an iPhone or an Android device. It's also the platform that the radio uses to communicate over Wi-Fi. So we have plenty of license in there to include that. So if you wanted to, you know, give a... Like a hospital administrator as well, but like a school administrator, the ability to talk to the sheriff's office over their cellphone, you have that capability. There's no reoccurring charge either with our technology on that. You pay a one-time license fee, which, you know, 45% off, you're like a couple hundred bucks. And then there's no reoccurring charges after that, other than the cellular bill. I can't control that. So this is probably the most important map for maybe the sheriff, because one thing I've learned, been around these parts recently, is you guys have a lot of chases that go multi-county. And so with our technology, you will literally be able to leverage all 25 of these sites. With the technology that the city of Greenville put in, they don't have that capability to do what's known as seamless roaming. So that's where you don't have to change a channel on a radio, right? You can just take off and go. So you'll be able to go from the top northern part of the brown to the southern part of the brown and not even have to change the channel on your radio. The other four counties, Van Zant, Kaufman, Rockwall, and Henderson, they are all in the state. They've already paid. They've already approved their ISI connections. We're waiting... You know, if you guys... Fortunately, if we come to an agreement, we'll all sit down together, all five counties, and we'll figure out how we want that structure to look like. There'll be an MOU that would be put in place. But you would have the ability to leverage each other's sites. And why that's really important is if you lose a site, you have all these other sites available to you to pick up where that site dropped off. So the redundancy aspect is phenomenal. And then the ability to talk, you know, from across different counties, like I said, I've learned, is pretty important around these parts because you guys do have some chases that don't just stay in the one county. So also...
What about the counties to our north and west there? Is there a reason we can't seamlessly... What was the word you used? Rome? Because they're not on the Harris system or because their system, whatever it is, does not have that feature? Period.
I think in the northern part, it's a lot of conventional. So there are systems that are looking to upgrade. And some of them are different systems as you get closer into Dallas. If you want to...
Yeah, if I may, what you'll see, if you'll look, as you do go north or west, that's Dallas County. So the coverage is pretty... It's pretty...
Actually, Collin County.
Yeah, Collin County, but it will go into Dallas County as well. So one of the things that we're looking to do is to leverage the new DART system. It's got 13 sites. And there is beginnings of talks with them that to join the ISI connectivity of this network. And that would bring the full Dallas County into play. And then in that Dallas County, we also have a partnership that's called INTECH, North Central Texas Emergency Communication System. And they have four cities as well. And so if those connect to DART and that connects to Rockwall, all of that would be seamless roaming. So all of that stuff is in the talks.
Okay, my question is on this. I mean, I think you have it covered very good. You take Hopkins County, Fannin County. What are they moving toward? Or do we have any idea? Are they involved in anything like this?
There has been talks with multiple agencies throughout this region to joining the network. There's an affectionate term of this network called the East Texan, the East Texas Interoperability Radio Network, the East Texan. So there's a... It's kind of a thing that's kind of...
You got to say it with an accent.
That's right. That's right. East Texan. Hey, I'm from Dallas, so on my life.
Why don't you introduce yourself?
Harry Maddox. Jason is my boss, and I cover the state of Texas and Arkansas. He filled in for me while I was on vacation, and we just kept him the face to you guys.
Yeah.
We didn't want to make it confusing, so... But yeah, there are talks in the works with DART, like I said. And then once DART is possibly involved, then we can involve those other four cities. And then surrounding counties are all interested in joining the network.
To the north?
The east, yeah.
Just east, okay.
Yeah.
And also the interrupt gateway that we talked about where there's the 20 talk paths, that does allow for... To bring in that radio traffic into your system. You just won't have the ability to share sites. Like here, Mr. Allen, you know, no matter what you hear, site count matters. I mean, it really, it does. It's a significant part of LMR. And so the more sites, the better. It's just the truth. So, but with the technology, with the interrupt gateways, we can still bring in that radio traffic, and you can still be able to talk to it. If we wanted to add LTE to your mobile and your portable radios, which we can do later down the road, it's field-upgradable. You can literally talk to New York City as long as you have 3G or better LTE, which is... It's becoming more and more common in terms of... And putting it into the radios, it's FirstNet capable. So I don't know if you guys have heard of FirstNet, but they are FirstNet certified. And so you can use the FirstNet infrastructure as well.
All our people have that.
Yeah.
Constables, Sheriff's Department, Homeland Security, all of them are carrying FirstNet.
So all of our radios are FirstNet certified. So this is our newest radio platform, which, if you go to the far left, these are our lower-tiered models, the XL-45 and 95P. I wanted to show these to you because, you know... You guys have the XL-200, which is really the, you know, our best-tiered radio for law enforcement, public safety. You know, we have our 400P, which is our fire radio. I don't... You know, I don't think the sheriffs really would need something like that. But you do have the 200P that you guys have. So we have our 150 or 185. Our 185 and the 200P are essentially the same, except the 185 is single-band only. But you're getting the multiband radios. So you can talk on VHF. You can talk on 7800. If we wanted... If there was UHF traffic in the area, which I don't believe there is, we could field-upgrade that as well and add that to the radio. But it seems like everybody around here is on VHF or 7800 for the most part. And so that's what's loaded into the radios for your proposal. Then we have our XL-200M, which is the far-right radio. It's our flagship mobile, does all bands, LTE, Wi-Fi, noise cancellation, all of that standard. It can... Like I said, you can add LTE to it as well if you prefer. And that radio is also FirstNet certified. So this is our Symphony console. Just going to touch on it briefly. It's made by dispatchers, four dispatchers. We developed it, won Best of Show when we first released it. It definitely is very intuitive. I've found that most dispatchers, it takes them, you know, five minutes, maybe, to sit down and learn it and figure it out. So like I said, you have three of these included in your project. We also included the backup control stations. And what that is, is that's a piece of equipment that if you lose your console, you can still talk on the... You can still talk to the radio system by pulling it into the control station, which is... You're pulling it out of RF air, but the capability is still there should the console go down to have the communications to get in and out of dispatch.
Or we can go out to the plant.
Or you can go out to the plant, or you could go to Rockwall. You could go to Kaufman. You could literally go to any of these, any of those five counties, and you could log into their Symphony. And once they're connected, you would be able to then dispatch, just like if they were here at the sheriff's office.
Would it interfere with their transmitting?
It would not. Because you log in underneath your own ID. They would be down a console. You know, that's the only downside, but at least that capability is there if something really catastrophic were to happen.
Yeah, if we lost a building.
Like a tornado.
Yeah. If you lost a building, you'd...
So...
Which is a purpose of the redundancy, you know?
So we've also included endless proposal training. We have subscriber training, so that means that we will teach you everything that you need to know and want to know about the radios. We'll also do the fleet mapping, the programming. It's all-inclusive. We also have the console training, so we'll come out and we will sit down with your dispatchers, show them how to use it. That's, you know, that's part of it. And then we have the system management training, which really is important because, like I said, you guys are going to have one side of the core, and that gives you local control. And local control is, you know, I've found that most people that... Most people learn that it is important to have. You know, so that's why Van Zant County went on their own, is they wanted that ability to control their own destiny. Well, we're giving you that. So you're going to have that side of the core that allows you to add, delete users, do what you need to do with the network. We have the training provided to show you how, we call it the UAS, how the UAS works, so that your users can... You can function as you need to function and not rely on the facility or have to go to the facility to do something. We're bringing that capability to you. And we also included web-based refresher training. So what that means is, you know, new dispatcher comes in, new officer comes in, new deputy. They can go online and they can watch the videos. We call it Harris Technical University, so it's all online training. So in alignment with the Van Zant County contract, we are offering three-year warranty on radios and infrastructure. So I know that was one of the last pieces that we were looking at. We wanted to make sure, so that we're all consistent, that everything lines in with the Van Zant County contract. So they mirror each other essentially, and that was part of it in terms of the warranty side of it. We do have a Dallas service shop that takes care of already, you know, Kaufman, Rockwall, Henderson, soon-to-be Van Zant, Granbury, INTECH, DART, all those customers. You know, I don't think that anybody has any complaints in terms of the partnering counties here with the service and the response time. I mean, they're within... You know, they're there quickly. So they're local. They're able to get here. So that's a strong point for you as well. And then we have the corporate facility as well for you guys. I mean, if you think about it, you know, we're trying to make it to where you guys can be as self-sufficient as you can. But they're always there. You know, we have James Grove here from the facility as well, answer any questions. I know that there was some stuff in terms of maybe the MOU and some of those things. So James showed up and is here to answer any questions that you guys might have in terms of the partnership with the facility itself. And then we do have an optional maintenance service agreement for years four through 10. You know, we can complete that one if you prefer later, maybe work through some of the options that are in there. But it's also, you should have all that information as well. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I would like to find this warranties, and I'm glad to see that three-year deal. I think we knock a home run on that. In reference to parts and stuff like that, we're talking about management service years one through 10, and also parts in reference to, you know, after the three years. This would not include... It would include services and stuff like that, but parts would be in reference to any type of repairs in reference to that. We would have to pay for it, wouldn't we?
Not for the first three years. You're covered underneath the warranty. After... Yes, you would have to... You would purchase parts, and if they're L-3 Harris branded parts, you would purchase those at 45% off list.
Say it again.
You would purchase those at 45% off list.
For three years?
Yes. So the Van Zant County contract, it sets that 45% off structure level for the duration of the maintenance agreement as well. So like your HGAC pricing is 26% off. So it's...
That would be in this... All that would be in this new deal that we just got, am I correct?
Yeah, new contract.
Yeah, the new contract.
Yeah.
We hadn't been over it.
I think the only thing that we updated is the warranty was one year infrastructure, two years radio, and now we've made them three years.
Correct.
Right? I think that's the only change that came recently, so it's in your favor.
It also should be noted, when you're looking at the maintenance contract, that year seven has a refresh. So all of the third-party equipment, like off-the-shelf, commercial off-the-shelf products, all that gets replaced in year three. And the contracts team...
Year seven or three?
Excuse me, year seven. The contracts team did a good job of leveling the expense throughout the first seven years, so that way you don't have a big chunk to pay in year seven. It's kind of leveled out through four through seven. So that way, it kind of makes it a little easier to afford instead of a big chunk at year seven.
Yeah.
So what is the cost of that refresh? I'm trying to understand.
The $1.90 a year? Yeah, I think it's $1.90 a year.
Yeah, roughly that number. I think when much of the level set it all, it was like $3.43, so you didn't get a big chunk on year seven.
And so that replaces all like the Cisco routers and switches, the third-party commercial off-the-shelf equipment that we don't have any control over the end-of-life and the advancement of that technology.
I was reading in reference to it, there were some other things that were coming about, and I can't remember what it was. In fact, I had anything off in addition to if we desired to talk with y'all. We had to make an appeal or a deal to y'all in which we'd have to pay addition. What was that called? You know what I'm talking about? It didn't actually have to do with this, but anything else that was deemed so.
A change order, maybe, for adding additional items?
Yes.
Yes. A change order would be standard. If there was something that you wanted to add later down the road or during the project, we could do a change order to add that in at the discounts, the 45% discounts.
That's what I was bringing up. It was an add-on type situation, but you were still being able to give us a discount in reference to that. Am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
That's what I thought.
All right, anything else?
This optional maintenance services, is that built into the cost? I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding this. Is that built into or is that separate from what y'all are proposing?
That is separate from what we're proposing. It's a separate contract, and it's actually where we would sit down with you and we customize. Every contract we do for maintenance is customized. What we do is we gauge the ability of your IT department and your support, your radio support technicians to figure out what their capabilities are. And if there's anything that they have that they're capable of doing that we've included in ours, it doesn't make sense for you to double-pay for it. So what we would do is sit down with your team, line those out, make sure that we're not double-dipping, because we don't want to do that to you. If your guys are capable of handling it, we take it out of our fees, and then you guys handle that on your own. And that way, you're not charging us to do something you already have the capability to do. So what we've done is we've, based upon some conversations that we've had, we've built that contract based on our conversations. A deeper dive may reveal that there's less that you have to buy from us and more that you can take on for yourself. And that's where the customization of the contract comes into play.
Tell me this. We had in reference to which it would cost a section. This is not involved in this, and that was the towers, the two additional towers that we're going to have to lease possibly. Which towers were those? And also, do you have any idea what the approximate cost possibly could be? could be?
So, we have the one in Celeste that's a leased tower, and then we have the one out west that is the leased tower as well. We've received initial pricing of like $2,900 a month, but we've found that the county is going to more than likely be able to negotiate a better rate than we are. So, maybe, once you guys look at that, if there's something that you can find agreeable, then move forward with the leased tower option. I know that we also, there is some county property within the same area, so you could look at building your own tower, and then you could turn around and lease it back out to cellular providers as well, so...
Did y'all look at any water towers in that area, or are they tall enough?
Yeah, that was exactly it, sir. There wasn't anything tall enough, and I was a little concerned about the condition of the water tower.
Which one?
I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, we understand that. All right, anything else? All right, thank y'all. Thank you. Let's see here. So, are we back up normal?
Yes, sir.
Good. I may get it down before the meeting's over yet. All right, Robert, bring it up. Which one wants to go first?
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners, Court, appreciate it. I don't know a lot about all the radio systems. I know from talking to the sheriff, he's happy to get something a lot better than what he's got. I was on city council when we started this process to upgrade the City of Greenville system, and I presume that the county commissioners, just like I was back then, just want the best system at the best price. Don't care what the sticker says on it, you just want the best one. You want to save the taxpayers money. Greenville started a process back in 2017 or 2018, led by the police department and fire department, to try to come up with what their best situation would be. They tried to get the county's cooperation, and at the time, different commissioners, different judge, different sheriff, they weren't able to do that. So, they started out on a process, built an RFP to meet the city's needs, and one of the key things that they wanted was something that other agencies could join in on once it was done, even though they didn't want to be involved in the planning process, they wanted to build something. The committee, after several years of building that RFP, working through the process, chose the Motorola solution and presented it to city council. At that time, Judge Stovall came and asked the city to give time to consider a partnership with the county, saying, hey, I wouldn't, Judge, back then, we're late to the game, but we really would like to partnership. I talked a lot about unity, cooperation, trying to get the best price and the best situation for both. So, the city paused their process for several months, at which time county spent time evaluating its needs, and ultimately signed a conditional agreement with L3 Harris six or eight weeks ago. Then that night, at the city council meeting, the city once again considered whether to follow their committee's recommendation of Motorola or to join on with this county's conditional contract. At that meeting that night, there was more calls for unity, cooperation, including up to $2 million that the county was going to give the city to join. And, you know, everyone agreed that it would be cheaper for everyone to be together, and it would be better because of the cooperation. But what never happened during that three-month pause for unity and cooperation was any communication or consideration, I believe, of the city's solution. I don't believe that the city committee ever came here and talked and said, here's what we've got, here's what we want, here's what it would cost, here's why we think our system and solution that we built for you to join would be best for you. I don't believe there was any of that discussion. And so, ultimately, the city did decide to go with their committee's recommendation, and, you know, I think we're sitting here today where you've only seen one solution. And it may be the best solution for this county. I don't know. That's something the five of you have to decide, and whatever you decide will be better than what we've got now. But this is a 10- or 20-year decision on what you're doing. It's going to cost the taxpayers a lot of money. It will be cheaper if you join Greenville than to build something on your own. It may not necessarily be better, but it will be cheaper. In fact, the presentation made here two meetings ago showed that Motorola solution of joining the city would save $2 million over the one you're considering here today. Joining Greenville would provide coverage on the sites that Greenville has already built, instead of you having to build your own sites within the city of Greenville. Joining Greenville would put into action the calls for unity and cooperation that Judge Stovall and Mayor Ransom and a lot of people think is the right thing to do, including myself. But I'm not asking you to join them. I don't know what's best for you guys. I'm not asking you to choose one solution over the other. I'm just asking to call Fire Chief Powell, the new police chief over there, have them come over and spend a few minutes with you, and explain why working together on the system that Greenville is already implementing, already, I mean, they're already getting equipment, putting it in. It would be fast, it would be, I believe, cheaper, it may not be better, but I'm asking you to at least consider.
Brandon, you here as a former council member or as counsel for Motorola?
I am not under any contract with Motorola whatsoever.
But you were.
I was with the city.
Yes, sir.
Nothing with the county.
Okay. Let's clarify the record a little bit, before we go any further.
I'll have one more thing, and then I can...
Okay, let's move on.
The last thing I have is a quote here that I pulled from the city council meeting, from Judge Stovall, and I think it applies here today. "As divided as our country seems to be in so many things, it will be a nice step forward. Let's do something as a community, all together be as one. It's a good project." And I think that's true. We should all try to work together. Sometimes you can't, but you shouldn't say, we'll work together if you'll do it our way, but we're not going to listen to your way, and that's what it sounds like it's been.
Okay, so, let's get the record straight. I went there the first time, and I asked for that. And at the next meeting, I went back and Jeremy Powell and I nearly got in a fight, because he got jumped up and got mad because there was somebody questioning their decision. And as far as cooperation, I asked and tried to get cooperation, and all they said was, we're going with Motorola, and that's our recommendation. And I went, and I went to Rockwall County, and I said, hey, how's y'all's deal with L3? Because Jeremy Powell said that night that it was way too expensive to go with L3, because they'd gone and talked to Rockwall. Sheriff and I went to Rockwall, and we talked to the sheriff at Rockwall, who put in, the sheriff's department of the county paid for all of Rockwall County's system. They paid for all of them, for all the cities, provided everything for all the cities. They told us, we could join their system for $10 a radio and about $150,000 a year, and you're telling me that's too high? And the more I talked to Rockwall, I found out about Van Zant. Van Zant was fixing to put a system in. Talked to the commissioners in Van Zant. I talked to the commissioners in Kaufman County. I didn't go to Henderson, but the system for us, that the city of Greenville wouldn't listen to, made a whole lot more sense. We're covering a whole lot larger area. We're covering all of South Hunt County, which touches Rockwall, Kaufman, and Van Zant. Why would we not be heard by the city that we had a need? But they never would. Their committee said, we're not changing our mind, no matter what y'all say. And now you're sitting there asking and saying, I'm wrong, and this court's wrong, for not considering Motorola. That's a little two-faced, and I just don't, I don't get it. We were more than happy to work with them, but they were in too big a hurry to stop. And again, I should, I was very nice at those meetings, trying to be respectful, and on some of it, I probably shouldn't have been, because if I'd been in charge and I was fixing to spend $11 million nearly of taxpayer money, I'd have been asking Hunt County every six months, are you sure you don't want in this? Are you sure you don't want in this? Are you sure you don't want in this? And nobody came and talked to us about it until, since 2017. And all of a sudden, we're the villains? That we're not cooperating? I don't get that. I'm sorry. I don't understand that. The city of Greenville had a responsibility. They wanted us to participate. They should have been asking us way ahead of us just accidentally finding out about it. I get, we'd have never known about it, except Jerry Ransom was walking out of the Oaks one day in January, I think. Commissioner Harrison, I'd been out there eating, and he got out of a meeting and he said, hey, why won't y'all work on this radio system with the city of Greenville? First we ever heard about it. First this group ever heard about it. And the city wouldn't slow up, and I understand, they got buildings, they got to get coverage, they got a bad system, so do we.
May I say something, Judge? What you referred to earlier is true, but I want to tell you something, I'm being sincere. The only reason, in actuality, this county, or even the counties to the south, is alpha money. And you are very correct, when Greenville came to us at that one time, said, hey, do you want to be a part of this? We did not have the money. We did not have the money, and I would for say this right here, if it wasn't for alpha money, we'd be looking at y'all saying, I don't know whether we can afford it. We know this needs to move on. We need, I was highway patrol back in 1980, okay? We weren't lucky to get any communications at all. In fact, we had CBs. I'm being sincere. And for this right here to take place, an improvement in communications with law enforcement, however you've been out there needing some help and couldn't even get anybody because of the waves. This is very much needed, and we took an opportunity here, and we're finishing this, and it was good for, it was good for the people, it was good for law enforcement, because we were out there basically left alone. It took me 45 minutes to get ahold of somebody, and I had two people pointing guns at them. That's how bad it was, and I watched this throughout. I've been a commissioner since 2001, with the exception of four years. And you made a statement, the gentleman here made a statement, the sheriff is happy for what's best we can get, and I tell you what, we don't have the best, but I think we'll be getting the best. I care about the community, I care about our officers, and so, basically, we need to move in on in reference to this. We can't work everything together, but we can do it for what's good and what's right. And they're saying, well, are you going to vote on this today? I would hope not, because I got a bunch of reading to do. And that reading needs to be due, we need to be educated, every one of us, in reference to what we're talking about and what we're voting for. And there's still more questions to be answered. But I tell you what, we're opening up right now for the future, and I'm talking about 30 years from now. This will be used, and so, we need to have all the knowledge that we can in reference to this. I'm not going to, hey, I understand that y'all want everybody getting together, but at some time and some point, somebody has to make a stand and say, hey, let's do what we have to and what's right, and that's the way I look at it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I can't go back way as far as in, but I enjoy the past 29 years of no service, and it has been rotten. Matter of fact, I was talking to the school the other day, and their schools in South Hunt County, they cannot even talk on their hand unit. Now, I want to ask just a question. What system are we on now? I think it's Motorola.
Didn't we change video cameras also?
Yes, because no service, and here's what I got told. Well, you know, we bought out WatchGuard, and it was kind of a company, and we're trying to get with it, and, well, here's the problem. The district attorneys and stuff will not accept cases if you got video, if you don't have video. So, the citizens are losing their cases, and we're not being able to put bad guys behind bars because of that. These people that argue over this, and I heard this statement two or three times, and it's money, I'm, no disrespect, but you said, well, you know, it's money, but maybe it's just not quite as good, but. Quite as good, but. Let me tell you something, when you're out there at the end of Hunt County, and I've been there, and you are in a bad situation, but don't count. And that's why I'm bothered about all of this. I've been listening the whole time. I've talked to Jeremy Powell, I've talked to everybody. Matter of fact, grew up with these guys, talked to them. I get it. If Motorola works, and it's the best thing, that's fine. The only reason that L3 Harris, that really caught my attention, was the coverage. I'm concerned about coverage. I'm also a taxpayer, by the way, just to let you know. I'm concerned about that, too, but I am concerned about coverage, because I have a group of men that is putting it on the line as hard as they can every night, that cannot reach dispatch. We have school officers that cannot reach dispatch. That is not acceptable, period.
We got a ton, we got a...
And I've been in law enforcement since '94 as well, and still am, and so, coverage is very important to me, and I'm kind of on the same page as Sheriff Jones just said. Coverage is so important. Money doesn't necessarily come in with coverage. It's what can we do to protect these officers, but at the same time, coverage also is important to the taxpayers. If you can't get out there and you can't communicate back and forth with dispatch or anybody else, then you're also not doing a good service for the citizens as well. So, that's where I'm at on this. L3 has done a great job so far on presentation and working with us and the local office as well. Jim Bob, you guys have jumped out there and willing to help out and help, you know, not just the citizens, but also the sheriff's department.
We got, you know, the thing, back to, you know, going to talk to Rockwall, the great thing I've found out there, they already covered about 80% of our county with their antennas, and now with Van Zant coming on it, they're already covering even more of our county. So, if we had, we got redundancy with L3 Harris that Motorola's not even talked about, any redundancy, and... Go to the mic.
So, in my National Guard experience, my profession was telecommunications operator. I was also a mobile subscriber equipment operator, and I saw on Facebook this argument going on about Motorola, and this is the first I heard about the L3 connection. And I have to say that, from what I know, what my experience has been, I worked in it for four and a half years. I was also trained to train other individuals on how to use the equipment, what was needed, what you, what you need to have on, back when I was in the military. On active duty, communications was also very important. The reason for the CH47, one of my helicopters that I worked on, very familiar with UHF, VHF, the need to communicate, and I can tell you what I've seen today in this presentation with L3, is that you've got a better bet going with their system and what they're offering, as long as you all come together on the terms. My concern would be, you have to consider the long term. Equipment is going to get antiquated. You're going to have to have a replacement plan or a replacement strategy in place, so when that equipment does antiquate, or when it breaks down, you have to determine, is the value of that equipment worth replacing, or do we need to rebuild it?
That's what we got in that, in the contract, in seven years.
Exactly, that's what I... Exactly, and so, from what I've seen this morning, you know, no disrespect to anybody else, but I, you know, Brent has a point, we do have to come together and work together, but you got to do so logically, and you have to do so with the budget that you have to work with, and I wholeheartedly agree.
You got to have reciprocation.
Yes, and I wholeheartedly agree with Terry Jones. We have to be able to communicate, because if we can't communicate, we're not going to do a good job of protecting our county from our law enforcement, and so...
Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners, anything else? Daniel, we going to take action today? I think we still got to work out a few things, don't we, before we can take action?
Jimmy, what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you still want, I'm sorry. Robert, come on up. Sorry, I got sidetracked.
So, Robert Smozinski, I'm obviously the local Motorola rep here. Look, we didn't mean for this to get into sort of a shout and a match, so I apologize, right? That's not what we intended today, I can promise you that. That's not what we intended today, I can promise you that. You know, as the county, and the reason I can't kind of came up here is, as the county is looking to invest in radio communications equipment for your first responders, you know, our position is that the county should fully understand all of the options available to them, right? To make a decision based on the solution, not the vendor, right? You know, Hunt County is in a very unique spot here in East Texas. They're right, there are neighboring L3 Harris systems, there are neighboring Motorola Solutions systems, there are live radio sites that border Hunt County, and we're building a system right here in the city of Greenville. You know, so what I'm sort of hoping for is, right, you know, typically, radio system procurements, and Commissioner Martin, you kind of talked about it, right? There's a lot of outstanding items that have to be discussed. We're talking about first responder safety, right? This can't be done in, in weeks. This takes a long time, and the city of Greenville has kind of showed you that. It, it does take a long time to get it done right. And, you know, what we're sort of pushing for is, you know, why not evaluate all of your options and then make a decision, right? We haven't given, we're happy to show you coverage maps, joining into other networks, right? We're happy to sit down and have those conversations, but we want to do it the right way, have a proper needs assessment, make sure that when we deliver a proposal to the county, there are no outstanding questions, that everything has been taken care of, and you're confident going forward with the contract over the next ten years, that, hey, everything has been covered. That's one of the things that most of our customers make sure of, is that everything gets covered from years one to ten, there are no outstanding questions. So look, you know, if the county does decide, right, I can't imagine, if you guys decide to hold off on approving this, the one thing I encourage you to do, talk to your neighboring Motorola partners, Motorola Systems. Talk to the city of Greenville, sit down with them, understand all your options, and at the end of the day, if that's the best solution for Hunt County, going with L3 in their facility, we'll happily step aside. But what we're looking for is the opportunity, and, you know, we haven't really gotten that. I understand, I can't change the past, but I was hoping for an opportunity to address the future. So with that said, if you guys have any questions, but that's really just what I wanted to get across today.
Thank you, Robert. Daniel?
You can take action today if you want. You can ask additional questions or consult. And if you do take action today, I would make the approval, if you do vote to approve it, subject to us working out the MOU for the contract.
I think Phil's already said he wants more time to look at it.
I would like you suggested, if I may, I read, I'm reading, listening to what you say. I suggest, I suggest that we have a special session. I believe that's already possibly...
Already on Tuesday.
When is it, Tuesday?
Tuesday, the thirtieth.
I feel like that, that way give everybody, I don't know if anybody's read the whole thing of what we have, and I think that ought to be, I think they ought to have what we were given. I know that we had another one given to us this morning. And I would think that we'd put it off until special session, session next week.
We'll put it on a whole business for, is everybody all right with that? All right, we'll put it on...
What you need to do is make a motion to postpone until next Tuesday, and then there needs to be a second to vote on that.
Okay.
Sure that's done the right.
Make that motion, Philip.
Yes, sir. I'll make that motion. Take action next special session, Tuesday.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. I'll say, at this time, let's, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session at twelve fifteen.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries for an executive session at twelve fifteen.